Good evening, everyone. I know it's a snow day, so we're all taking our time. I'm okay with that. I went in two hours late today myself, so why not? So it's February 11th, 2020 at 5:05. We're calling this meeting to order. We will start, as always, with our silent invocation and a pledge of allegiance led by Margarita Chavez. So if you join me in the silent invocation.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Margarita. Thank you, everyone. Announcements and additions. Mr. Deputy County Manager, filling in for Ms. Julie. She's up north at Roundhouse. How are you tonight?
Good evening.
Excellent.
Good evening, Chairman. Good evening, members of the Commission. Doing quite well. There are no changes or adjustments or modifications to the agenda this morning. I stand for any, or this evening, I stand for questions.
Anyone? Awesome. Thank you, Enrico, very much. Quickly, before we get to proclamations, February is a very cool month. First of all, as we know, it's Black History Month, which is always very important in our country's heritage. But it's also very important because we have four county employees who celebrate birthdays in the month of February, of which not the least is County Manager Julie Baca, who's up north in Santa Fe, working hard at the legislature. But we also have, where is he at? County Attorney Ken Martinez, whose birthday is February 12th. Friday on Valentine's Day, Commissioner Charlene Pascoti. And then on Saturday, followed by Commissioner Stephen Michael Casada. So it is a birthday month. Let's give it up for them. Happy birthday. So you know the month of birthdays, and birthday cake is always important at the county. So we're sharing some cake up here, which we'll make sure we eat during a break, not on camera. But I do want to say personally, thank you, and happy birthday to each of them. Another year around the sun, and may it be as enjoyable and prosperous as it hopefully has been this last year. So congrats to you all. And then we have an acknowledgement, which I will read. It's, I'm putting this forth. Margarita Chavez, if she would come down, along with Antonio DuHart. Margarita brought this to my attention in terms of, always, we want to make sure we're able to recognize those individuals in the county who are doing sort of work that we don't always get to recognize. So we're going to do that tonight. And I thank you, Margarita, for bringing this to my attention. So acknowledgement, the Burnley County Board of Commissioners does hereby acknowledge Antonio DuHart, acknowledging Antonio DuHart has been working at Burnley County Care Campus as a security officer for New Mexico Protective Services for three years. His work ethic has been outstanding, and he continues to shine as an excellent team player within the Behavioral Health Services Department. And acknowledging Antonio has been very dependable and reliable throughout the years. He is always on time in his shift, and even works overtime to make sure all shifts are covered. He addresses any issues or concerns with his security team right away, and he properly trains new staff with the county and department policies and post orders. And acknowledging Antonio is very attentive to the behavioral health staff, he escorts employees to their vehicles on a daily basis without being asked. Whenever staff needs assistance, he is always there by their side without hesitation. And acknowledging he responds to incidents quickly, often the first to respond, he has a calm manner and shows so much empathy and respect to the clients. Now therefore be it resolved that the Burnley County Board of Commissioners conveys its sincere gratitude to Antonio DuHart for demonstrating professionalism each day on the job, always going above and beyond for the behavioral health staff, the clients, and the care campus service team done this 11th day of February 2020 in Burnley County, presented by the Board of County Commissioners. Congratulations, Antonio. Margarita?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, if I may, I just want to continue to echo what was said in the acknowledgement. As you know, Antonio is a little bit taller than I am, not by much, but a little bit. But I tell you, the big reason why we wanted to do this recognition for Antonio is our staff is trained and trained and trained on how to appropriately engage with the mental health or behavioral health population. And Antonio comes onto the scene and immediately it de-escalates. And the way that he is able to work with the clients as a security guard, not even as a part of our team, even though we're trying to bring him over to the dark side, is phenomenal. And often, we think of security in a very different way. And it's really important to recognize that our clients are often with us on the worst day or the worst week of their lives. And so having that presence, and you know, before we even have a chance to pick up to a radio to ask for help, he's there, even before our staff is. And I've observed many times our staff trying to de-escalate a client, and it's not going well, and then Antonio speaks up, and immediately the client is able to calm down and de-escalate. So just again, want to thank you for giving us this opportunity, and thank you, Antonio, for all that you do.
Thank you, Margarita, very much. Antonio, if you'd like to come up for a picture? Thank you, and congrats again. Next, we have an acknowledgement of the Burnley County Risk Management Department, General Services.
Mr. Board Chair, Commissioners, I'm proud to say that the risk management is an important part of Burnley County government in preventing losses, providing safety training, as well as managing insurance coverages and claims countywide. On January 24th, 2020, the Burnco Risk Management Department received the Workers' Compensation Safety Award from New Mexico Counties for having the lowest frequency of workers' compensation claims of any Class A county. The award includes a plaque and $7,000 to continue its efforts. The award recognizes the staff's commitment to the health and safety of their fellow employees in reducing the use of taxpayer funds on avoidable injuries. Congratulations to the Risk Management Department for its dedication and service to protecting the health and safety of Burnley County employees. And I'd like to add, it's the efforts of the staff that did this, but also the help of all the staff members of Burnley County that operate in a safe culture. So we appreciate all the employees of Burnley County and the safety staff that I brought with me tonight.
Thanks. Congratulations, John. Thank you, everyone. The funniest thing is, if you look at that check, it says "non-negotiable," so I hope we got our money some other way. All right, let's just keep the good news going. We've got a certificate and award from the finance team, the FY 2018 Audit and Accountability Award. Deputy County Manager Reagan.
Good evening, Deputy County Manager Shirley Reagan, Finance. Each year in January during the legislative session, the New Mexico Counties and the state auditors represent an annual audit and accounting awards. The awards are given to large counties, mid-sized counties, and small counties in recognition of continued audit excellence and most improved county certificates for those that have done outstanding work on their audits, submitted their audits in a timely manner, and have sustained excellence with the highest audit opinions. An unmodified opinion is the best opinion that can be given and means that the financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Burnley County received an unmodified opinion on our audit, and the FY 19 CAFRA was accepted by the Commission at the December 11th, 2019 Administrative Meeting. On January 23rd, State Auditor Brian Cologne, Cologne, excuse me, and the New Mexico Counties presented the Audit and Accountability Crystal Award in the Large County category to Burnley County. And I have to point out, this is the first time in Burnley County's history that we've received this award. I'm so proud of Burnley County, and I'm honored to be a proud, to be a part of an organization that works under strong leadership and support by the county commissioners, a solid management team led by County Manager Julie Murgas Baca, and a team of outstanding employees throughout the county. We've been diligently working on fine-tuning our procedures, strengthening our internal controls, implementing best practices through process improvements, and proactively addressing and cleaning up our audit findings and training our team. The driving force behind this effort has been Pam Moon, our Accounting and Budget Director, and Jackie Sanchez, the Assistant Accounting and Budget Director, and the accounting staff that's standing behind me here, who pull together the information and coordinate the internal and external audits, and ultimately produce the CAFRA. All of this is critical, and it supports the county's goals to be accountable, transparent, and practice-prudent financial management. Thank you for the opportunity to present this award this evening and acknowledge our employees. I'd like for Pam and Jackie to have some words and introduce a team, after which we'll stand for questions.
Good evening, Chairman Talbert and Commissioners. My name is Jackie Sanchez. I am the Assistant Director for Accounting and Budget. Thank you for the recognition of the audit achievement. I'm grateful for the teamwork that our accounting department demonstrates. The team strives towards reaching common goals and objectives, towards timeliness, towards accuracy, and sustaining compliance, as well as financial controls. And so although not all of them were able to attend, I would like to introduce the ones that are present. And there again, I'm most grateful for the entire accounting department. We have Pamela Moon, our Director, and Anthony Infantino. He is one of our principal accountants. Natalia Rubencheck, Senior Financial Accountant. Kim Rosales, Senior Financial Accountant. David Trujillo, Senior Financial Accountant. And Letitia Carion, Financial Accountant. Thank you.
Any questions? You good? All right. Picture time.
Mr. Chair, while they're coming up, can I just say that I can't even imagine the complexity of doing the work you all do, much less getting an unmodified audit report. I think that's just absolutely amazing. And thank each of you. I know that you probably looked a lot younger last year than you do this year, but you've really done a good job.
Yeah, I'll come. I just wanted to add, that was one thing they said. It's not that we didn't have any audit findings this year. We had one minor one. But because of the progress the county has weighed, and again, made over the years, and that's a collective effort. So just wanted to point that out as well.
Okay. Board and Committee Appointments, we will handle that during our consent agenda. And number seven, we're at Public Comment and Communications. Please remember that if you are speaking publicly, you have two minutes. We will warn you at 30 seconds that your time is almost up, and you'll need to wrap it up. When your name is called, please make your way down and state your name at the podium clearly, and Julianne will tell us the order now. Thank you, Julianne.
You're welcome. Judge Bill Parnell, Randy McGinn, Don Schrader, Clay Campbell.
Good afternoon, Chairman. And Commissioners, I'm here really to ask you to not only name a courtroom after Charlie Daniels, Charles W. Daniels. He's Charlie to me has always been for 40 years. But I'd like you to name the Second Judicial District Courthouse after Charles Daniels. I would not be the lawyer, or the judge, or the human being I am if it hadn't been for Charlie Daniels. He's lived in New Mexico all these years. I've played music with him almost every weekend for 40 years. And I've known him as a brother, and he's the best man I've ever known, and the brightest lawyer I've ever known. He was a shining light among the bar, has been a professor for most of the lawyers in this town. Everyone knows him and would appreciate naming the courthouse after him. And I'll answer any questions you have. I know that he was, had a great hand in putting forward the constitutional amendment for pretrial detention. And I know it's been controversial, but I want you to know that I volunteered for a couple of months to go downtown, although I'm in children's court, to help because they were low on judges. I think four judges were out of commission. So I asked, or I allowed my time to help and found no problem with implementing those rules. It's just a common sense rule that helps a lot, I think. So I appreciate his work on that.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question.
Sure.
Judge, thank you for coming. And I appreciate the letter I've received from you and the stories about Justice Daniels. So if you were going to meet with Justice Daniels this coming weekend, you're going to play music. What would be the first song you would play?
Well, let me tell you, he wrote a song called Punk Country Band, after the kind of music we played. And he also wrote a song, because he was a New Mexico person. He wrote a song close to his death that was called "The New Mexico Sky." And I recorded that song and presented it to Randy after his death at the ceremony, because he wanted me to do that, and I finally learned how to use the machine to get it done. But we made a CD of that song, and it's all about how much he loved New Mexico.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Randy McGinn, Don Schrader, Clay Campbell, Christopher Papaleo, Geraldine Amato.
My name is Clay Campbell. I'm a district court judge. Ms. McGinn is making me go first. It's what she does. She's very persuasive. She was my former law partner before I became a judge. I sent each one of you a letter expressing my thoughts and support for the idea of naming my courthouse, what I consider to be my courthouse, after Justice Charlie Daniels. I want to say how appropriate it is for you all to start your meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, and in particular, it's the last four words of the Pledge of Allegiance that resonates with me and relates directly to what I have to say about Justice Daniels. Because he was all about those four words, "and justice for all." He embodied those four words, "and justice for all." He was a lawyer for 40 years, 20 years listed in the very first edition as Best Lawyers in America. That's something that all of New Mexicans can be proud of. He was a law professor. He was a Supreme Court Justice for 10 years. I've described some of his, what I consider to be his accolades and his merits, and some of the reasons why I think that he is so important to New Mexico, but also so important to Albuquerque and Burnley County, that it would be justified, no pun intended, to name the courthouse after Justice Daniels. But most importantly to me is the sense that, the sense that you all must get, walking into these chambers named after Vincent Griege, a public servant, and the sense that that conveys to the public of your commitment to public service. Well, by the same token, that's how I feel about this courthouse that I've worked at for 15 years, and how that would convey the meaning of "and justice for all," not just to the judges, not just to the lawyers, but most importantly, to the people of New Mexico who walk through our doors every day, that they can expect exactly that, justice for all. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Randy McGinn. I was Charlie's wife. And this was not our idea. This was suggested by Stan Whitaker, the chief judge over at the District Courthouse, and then Maggie Hart, who's now gone on. And Jim, it's great to see you up there as a Commissioner. But when she proposed it, and when Stan Whitaker proposed it, I said, it is not something he would ever ask for, because he was the humblest man you could ever meet. And in fact, when people asked him, who didn't know what he did for a living, what he did, he would just tell them that he had a government job, and would never say, "I'm a Supreme Court Justice on the New Mexico Supreme Court." He'd just say, "I have a government job," and that was it. In fact, at his memorial service, all the guys that he raced cars with were stunned that he was a Supreme Court Justice. I mean, they came up and said, "Who knew?" Because he never said anything about this when he was racing cars with us. So it would be, let me say, I know the original proposal was to name the courthouse after him. He would be rolling in his grave that you would name anything after him, because he would say, "There are other people who deserve it, and he's always been a supporter of both women and minorities." And I know there's some question about diversity and all of that stuff, too. And I can't change that. He's a white guy. That's all I, you know. I will tell you that he's the kind of guy that all of us are amazed at. He was born poor. His parents were sharecroppers. One of his first memories as a kid was being given a little sack. They were out picking cotton on this farm that they were sharecropping, and of course, you don't have any babysitters. And so he was about four or five years old, and he had his two younger brothers, and they were all out, and they gave him a little sack to pick cotton. And he picked enough cotton to make a pillow, and then he climbed up in the buckboard and took a nap. So he knew right then, he wasn't meant to be a farmer, and was not only the first person to graduate college in his family, was the first person to graduate high school in his family, and did extraordinary things. And if by putting his name on something that can inspire other people, then I'd ask you to do that. Thanks for the time tonight. And by the way, his grandson is here, and also his law partner, Joe Goldberg, here too.
Mr. Chair, I had the pleasure of serving on the Manol Board with Randy, and it's good to see a Manol graduate out there. How are you doing? And thank you for sharing those stories.
Don Schrader. Trump's racist white supremacy. Trump's cruel separation of thousands of immigrant children from their parents. Trump's denial of the climate crisis. Trump's threat in 2017 to mass murder the 25 million people of North Korea. Trump's sexual assaults on women. Trump's attacking news media as the enemy of the people. Trump's thousands of lies and insults. Trump's insane addiction to nuclear bombs. Trump's America-first worship of power and money. Trump's withdrawal from the Iran nuclear deal. Trump's siding with Israel against the Palestinians. Trump's support for bloody dictators. These evils are far worse, far worse, than what Trump was impeached for. Presidents George Washington and Thomas Jefferson bought, sold, enslaved human beings. Sadly, the U.S. Constitution has always ignored and allowed massive evils of U.S. presidents from the beginning till now. Apart from many people who have taught me, loved me, inspired me, I am no better than Trump or anyone else. With much help, we all, including Trump, can turn from evil and change. But the millions of people cheering Trump's evil ways makes it much harder, makes it much harder for him to wake up and to change.
Christopher Papaleo, Geraldine Amato, Tad Neminski.
Good evening. My name is Chris Papaleo, and I'm here to speak in support of the motion for naming a courtroom after the Honorable Justice Daniels. I'm currently a third-year law student, and in my three years until Justice Daniels got sick, I had the great pleasure of running into him on campus all the time. Because as you will hear from people tonight, he was a man of the students. His goal was to help educate lawyers, inspire lawyers, support lawyers, and he did it with grace and compassion. You could run into him in the hall and stop him and ask him a question, and he would pull you aside and give you the rest of the evening if it took that long to make sure a student understood. Even as a justice on the Supreme Court, he participated in something they call Evidence and Trial Practice, which is the school's way of training new lawyers in trial skills. He'd be there in the evenings, and again, he would stay as long as the students needed to get the concept we were supposed to, to practice it, and to make sure we understood why we were doing it. I also had the privilege of considering Justice Daniels a friend. Through my work at McGinn Montoya Levin Curry, I got to meet the man I would then call Charlie, and get to enjoy his humor, his intelligence, and his and get to enjoy his humor, his intelligence, and his musical skills. I think, as it was described in the literature, that Justice Daniels is a titan of the law community. He was also a titan in the community. He was available to his friends and family. He entertained New Mexicans, and he gave a life of service on the court, and gave us many great opinions. And one I'd like to mention in particular was the very first New Mexico Supreme Court opinion that I read, which was State versus Nick R., which was about a pocket knife. And because of Justice Daniels, I now keep a pocket knife in my backpack with me, because I can, when I go to campus. Thank you.
Geraldine Amato, Tad Nemensky.
Good evening. We are not a republic, despite double-talking bar association-controlled operatives like Double Cross Christian J. Sekulow say, and has a litany of lies that are recited in so worship of the federal flag. We're more like a federal reservation, a coast-to-coast Masonic Lodge, a colony of the international bankster cartel. The aristocratic British pension bar dynamic would not control the American legal judicial network. Bar association operatives and so-called public offices could not claim absolute immunity to accountability under the law, actually, the U.S. UCC right now. Anyone, vis-à-vis citizen appeals for redress of grievances, they have absolute immunity. But no attorney at bar or bench dare cross the controlling members of the bar. They get disciplined, license suspended, disbarred, maligned in the press, disappeared or murdered. I've never seen a fully-publicized Masonic ritual murder of an attorney here, but when I was in Kansas City, Missouri, a couple of years ago, 39-year-old Tom Pickert was sitting on his front porch, and somebody came and shot him in the head. And the publicity that followed it indicated exactly that it was a Masonic ritual murder of an attorney who got out of line. What we have too much of, besides criminals in public office, are cowards, who imagine that by covering their tails at any cost today, they'll save their necks from the block. And not to mention gullible irrationals thrilled with cheap show business. I can't get enthused about what was said here about naming buildings, et cetera. I know that there's organized crime in the family courts and in the Second Judicial District Court. My family's a victim of organized crime in the family court. I don't forget what's going on here. We're hiding criminal activity under the guise of public office, and drug trafficking is one of the main issues underlying it, and the trafficking of children. Raleigh Brueval, right now, is in prison because he tried to stop
Thank you.
The trafficking of children for pornography in the Northwest Valley. Any questions?
No, ma'am.
This is a big charade right here, with all this here unnecessary accolades about people who are criminals.
Mr. Nemensky.
Thank you. My name is Tad Nemensky. Well, do we have justice? What kind of justice do we have? If all lawyers and judges belong to law courts, belongs to association, name, New State New Mexico Albuquerque Bar Association. Politicians are in the backpocket, so judges too have lawyers. They belong to elite organizations, Albuquerque Bar Association. No, we never will get justice this way. Now, law enforcement, same way. Politicians are in the backpocket of those people, buying and selling county property and city properties. Yes, in the backpocket. I can look, see at one, always negotiating, right on the front of me, with one millionaire, and others, too. So, well, I remember my native country, Poland, Czechoslovakia. What's happened? They don't succeed. Socialist, monarchy even, Hitler, during Hitler, and prior Hitler was monarchy. That never succeeded there. Well, are we gonna succeed here? I don't think so. Decided, because liberal destroying this country. Who started? Obama. Dividing country. That's not Donald Trump.
Thank you, Julianne. Real quick, before we get to Ms. Becker, I just want to recognize Counselor Diane Gibson in the audience, coming in from the State Council. Thank you, Counselor Gibson. Thanks for being here. Next, we'll have University of New Mexico Hospital report, Kate Becker, CEO.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. You should have our report, our early report, in your packets, and I'm happy to answer any questions about that. I did want to just bring you up to date on two things. The first one is, our second quarter of FY '20, which was October through December, is the time of year when we do our employee and provider engagement surveys. And so we just received the results back of those, and we're very excited about that. We had an 87% response rate from our employees to that survey, which is fantastic. And what a great gift, because that gives us a chance to both celebrate what they think we do well, and work on the things they think we could improve. And what I wanted to share with you, because it's important for you to be proud of your hospital, is the number-one thing we scored on, and we're far above the national average for this, was people find meaning in their work, that they really are there because they have a heart for the mission and what we do. And I thought you would appreciate knowing that. So we're doing action planning around our opportunities, and we'll be working on those through the spring, and have a report back in the summer on what those plans are. The second thing is, in the second quarter of FY '20, we finished up our schematic design for the new hospital tower, which I believe you're all familiar with, but it's a good idea to just have a reminder. And so we're on design development now, which is when they put together those construction documents to actually start working from to build the building. So that is underway, and we're looking forward to getting the extra capacity, because, as usual, especially this time of year with flu season, we are very crowded. So that's my update. Questions?
Thank you very much. Good news to hear about the new hospital. That's exciting.
It is, actually. Thanks.
Especially because we need it. Thank you.
Good job.
Two things we need to real quickly read into the minutes for tonight, is regarding our closed meeting that we had. So I would offer the following statement regarding the closed litigation meeting held Tuesday, January 28, 2020, at 3:30 p.m. Only those items described on the published notice and agenda for the closed meeting, held on January 28, 2020, were discussed at the closed meeting. I need a motion for approval of this statement, and it will become part of the minutes of this meeting. Motion is second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Statement number two, I move that the Burnley County Attorney be authorized to proceed with the matters discussed in the closed meeting, held on Tuesday, January 28, 2020, at 3:30 p.m., within the parameters set by this commission. Can I get a second? Second? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Next, approval of minutes. We have the minutes of January 14, the administrative meeting. Can I get a motion for those? Awesome. Motion is second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. And the minutes of January 28, administrative meeting. Motion? I move their approval. Thank you. Second? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Mr. Chair, before you move into the consent agenda Yes, sir. I don't want to disrupt that process, but I would like to introduce to the commission my nominee for the Code of Conduct Board, and that's Dr. Birch Williams, who's out here and found us, and got through the weather, and all kinds of stuff. I'm delighted he is willing to accept an appointment to this board, if you also choose. Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, ma'am. Vice Chair, Tuskody.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Williams, for being here. I would like to acknowledge Judy Kellman, who I am sponsoring for the Joint Air Quality Control Board. And I want to commend both of you for being here tonight and for your service. I remember when I was appointed to the DWI Planning Council, I know I keep bringing this up, that I guess I was appointed to the DWI Planning Council, but I remember the night that my appointment was on the consent agenda, and I asked one of the commissioners if I should come to the meeting, and that person said, "Ah, it's not that important." And I said, "You know what? To me, it's important. And it's important to me that you're both here, and that you're engaged citizens, and that you're willing to serve on these boards." So I'm so happy to see you both in the audience tonight, and thank you so much for being here and for your service.
Thank you, Commissioners. So before we approve the consent agenda, I need to get a few ARs. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Okay. Mr. Chair.
So we'll need one for item 9E and item 9F.
9E, sir, is 2020-20, AR 2020-20.
Oh, my gosh. That's like a palindrome.
We should buy a lottery ticket.
We should. And for 9F?
AR 2020-21.
Excellent. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner O'Malley.
Just wanted to be able to pull off item E. I noticed that Betty Valdez, the Director of Housing, is here, and I have a question about that.
Sure. Okay. Anyone have an issue with pulling off item 9F? Okay.
Sorry, it's E.
Oh, 9E. Excuse me. Sorry about that. Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, if we could just correct the AR numbers real quick.
Because we did do the zoning, we canceled the zoning
Yes, ma'am.
Meeting, and I do have to change that. That's AR 2020-19 is number E.
Okay.
And 20-2020-20 is number F. Sorry.
No, no problem. Thank you. Thank you, Julianne, for noticing that, and Madam Clerk. Okay, so we'll pull off item 9E, and then, would you like to, after we approve the consent agenda, have her come down there? Okay, excellent. So, motion to approve the consent agenda as stated now? All right. Motion is second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. And we'll now hear from Ms. Valdez. Commissioner O'Malley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Ms. Valdez. I was noticing, in the summary, it talks about that you were adjusting because of the recommendation, I guess, the published allowable fair market rents that HUD puts out. And I, my question is, does the county or the agencies who, of course, have Section 8 programs, are they required to abide by HUD, or are they allowed to, for example, maybe even be more generous in terms of allowances?
Chair Commissioners, we are required by regulation to abide by HUD's fair market rents. We are allowed to exceed that by 10% if we have the budgets. However, our budgets have been cut the last three years. And if you've been reading the newspapers, we're expecting an $8.6 billion cut to our HUD budget this year. So this year, we are following the fair market rents that were published by HUD.
Okay, so nationally, you're talking about nationally, that there is, there's an expectation from the, I guess, this administration to cut that budget by, what did you say?
$8.6 billion.
That's a lot of money. So, these, of course, is the federal dollars coming down. I think if we are allowed to look at being more generous, and I'm just saying this because this is one of our biggest challenges, we're not the only city facing it, is this just huge gap between wages, income earned, disposable income and rents. And if there's some way for us to help with that in some way, maybe through the general fund or supplementing that, I think we should have that discussion.
Chair Commissioners, we're always open to supplemental funding, wherever that comes from. It's a big gap in the market. Our landlords are feeling the crunch, but we have a very supportive community, and our landlords have been working with us on our rents.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Malley. Ms. Valdez, real quick, just, are we able to determine, of that $8.9 billion cut, what trickles down? What part are we missing out on, to Commissioner O'Malley's point? What would be that gap from that proposed new budget decrease nationally, if you would, roughly, if you know?
So, Chair Commissioners, for the $8.6 billion that's proposed being cut, it'll affect all of our programs within our housing. It'll be CDBG, it'll be rents, it'll be across the board. Every single program that we offer to our community will be felt. Historically, the last three years, our programs have been cut. Right now, we are receiving approximately 80% of the budget we received last year, so you can do the math. We will not be able to help who we're helping now. That's just the bottom line.
Okay, maybe this is more for Deputy County Manager Reagan. To Commissioner O'Malley's point, what dollar figure are we talking about that we would need to make up roughly?
Oh, my gosh.
If we were even to talk about going into the general fund?
Oh, well.
I just want to have an idea.
Well, so, for our budget for last year, just to give you an idea, and it wasn't general fund, we're fully federally funded in my department.
Oh, okay.
We do not touch federal, our general fund right now. We do not receive any kind of general funding.
Okay.
We're fully federal-funded or state-funded. We are grant-funded. So my budget right now is somewhere almost around $30 million federally funded. So you, we're anticipating probably somewhere around a $9 million cut.
Okay. That's a good number to at least know, and that we could work towards in terms of trying to figure out.
That's if we lose CDBG and everything
Sure.
Across the board, because we received a $1 million grant from CDBG, taking that all into account.
So even though you're fully federal-funded, are you still eligible for other federal grants that you would qualify for?
Absolutely. And we're looking at that and trying to plug in those holes, anticipating that federal loss. Yes.
Awesome. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner O'Malley.
Thank you. Every year, we go through a little bit
Yes.
Depending on the administration and, you know, what they want to target in terms of funding. And so when I was looking at this, I was just, the question was, assuming that we do get the funding for this year, then there's this sort of like 10% ability or gap, you know, what would be that number? Not to like make the entire program whole, because there's some other programs outside of, you get federal funding for not just vouchers, but other things. So that's basically what I was, you know, asking about.
Right. Commissioner, Chair Commissioners, my voucher funding is $25 million a year.
Okay, that's a lot of money.
Yeah. So I have a pretty big budget, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Well, we have to find out what that number is.
Right. So, I mean, it's, we just got that number today from HUD and from Congress and what they're looking at. So we're watching it.
Sure. Deputy County Manager Reagan?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was just gonna say that each year when the situation occurs, Betty, we work with Betty, and if she identifies a potential shortage, we look for something to keep her going until like when they delay approving the budget and things like that. And like she said, there, everything is federal, and as you can tell, that's a large amount to be able to take out the general fund. But to Commissioner O'Malley's point, we could look at other funding sources, or have to reprioritize some things if that becomes a priority over something else.
Great. Thank you. And again, I just wanted to sort of understand sort of the magnitude of what we were talking about. So granted, we couldn't make it all up, but whatever we could find and do those things, that's good to hear. Thank you. Thank you all very much. Yes, ma'am. Mr. Callan? Yes, sir. Thank you. One question. I'm new to all of this, and all those alphabets you referred to
I'm sorry.
No, no. They make sense to these folks, because they've been working with you and them a long time.
I'm so sorry. You're right.
Can you just kind of tell me what a typical situation would be in terms of an individual family, and what effect that is? And I realize, you have lots of typicals, but what are we talking about as it affects a family?
So, Chair Commissioners- So Chair Commissioners, we serve right now on our voucher program alone about 3,000 families. A typical average rent would be $760 for a two-bedroom. That would serve probably a family of four. That $25 million covers 3,000 families. Because we are one of the poorest states in the nation, we're hit the hardest. That takes away our landlord income. It takes away our subsidy income. So it takes, it doesn't just affect our renter, it affects our landlord. I mean, it's a trickle-down effect. It affects my employee's salary. So last year, when we were faced with this same scenario, we got to the point of a government shutdown. And it became my employees, the landlord, the renter, I mean, it affected the whole community. And I don't think anybody realized how great that impact was. You know, so it's not just the renter, it affected everybody.
Thank you, Betty.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Casado?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So let me ask you this, the 3,000 families that you serve, what district are, what's the majority of people, what district would you say had the highest amount of these 3,000 families?
Chair Commissioners, they are pretty evenly distributed. And because of the lower rents that we have with our fair market rents, a lot of them are in District 2, a lot of them are in Commissioner Colley's district, a lot of them, they're evenly distributed because of the fair market rents that we're required to pay.
Okay, so, because my question is, are we covering people living in the city? Or are we covering people who live in Burnaleo County?
Both. And we're not allowed to steer, and we do a lot of the business with landlords that have multifamily units in the unincorporated area, and we encourage...
How much of the city of Albuquerque, how much does that government help us with these 3,000 families? Or do they have their own 3,000?
They have, they have their own voucher program. This is strictly for Burnaleo County.
Okay. And so they're also going to be affected coming up, and they're going to have to figure out for whatever families they may service through the city of Albuquerque?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Malley, did you want to make a motion on this particular item?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'll move, I move approval.
Okay. Motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Valdez, very much. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner O'Malley. We're now on to adoption of ordinance amendment to county code. Nothing there. Adoption of resolution. Madam Clerk, please issue Resolution Number 41A, federal legislative policy priorities.
Mr. Chair, AR 2020-21.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Clay?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. My name is Clay Campbell. I am Chief of Staff, Burnaleo County Manager. And what you have before you is our annual resolution for the county's federal priorities that we take forth to Washington, D.C. with our lobbyists, as well as for agencies, to let them know what we're doing here and what we need. So we have nine particular topics that are summarized in your resolution, and I won't go through each of them, but they do address areas of criminal justice and adult detention reform, behavioral health, trying to seek a supplemental definition of homelessness so that we can bill for more Medicaid items in behavioral health, Medicaid assisted treatment, the Air Force-based jet fuel spill is an item that we continue to monitor, Sunport and Sunport Boulevard Extension are two projects we seek additional funding for, along with the Trisco Vista Boulevard. Federal Labs funding is a constant. We always want to make sure Landall and Sandy Labs get fully funded. And Crestview Bluff Open Space, we want to let the federal government know that we're going to be pursuing the land and water conservation grant, and we're seeking money this year in Santa Fe to use as a non-federal local match. So I stand for any questions you may have for this resolution.
Commissioners, anyone? Okay. There we go. Appreciate it. Excellent. Second?
Second.
Okay. Second. Motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed, yes. Thanks a lot, Clay. Okay. Now we're on to number 12, approvals. First would be Communication Services, naming of the Burnaleo County District Courtroom, motion to approve the naming of an unassigned courtroom. Commissioner O'Malley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I just, I think that sort of as we started to move forward with this resolution, that the intent was to have co-sponsor Commissioner Colley as his co-sponsor, but I just see my name is on it. I think that Tia Bland is here. So that the last meeting, when this was put before us for naming, I bet it was the courthouse, and the renaming committee recommended, my understanding is the courtroom that is now, is it under renovation? Or could you talk a little bit about the renaming committee's proposal?
Yes. Tia Bland, Communication Services Director and Chair of the county's Internal Naming and Memorial Committee. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, as you know, the naming committee's job is to review and vet naming proposals involving county buildings and facilities. This particular proposal, sponsored by Commissioner O'Malley, the naming proposal, which seeks to name a new unassigned courtroom at the Second Judicial District Court in honor of the late Justice Charles W. Daniels, as you've heard, a well-known, highly-regarded legal reformer, I'll call him. The naming committee supports this proposal.
Thank you. And I do want to thank those who wrote to me, both Judge Parnell and Judge Campbell, and of course, I did have a conversation with Ms. McGinn. And clearly, this is very deserving, the naming, renaming, naming of this courthouse, I mean courtroom, sorry. And I appreciate the support and the supportive letters, the stories. He was a very unique individual, very accomplished, man of integrity and courage. And, you know, it's, of course, my honor to carry this request forward. I don't know if you wanted to add anything to that, Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Justice Daniels, I resonated with the folks here who mentioned how uncomfortable he would be that this is on the county commission agenda at all. I last talked to Charlie at a nominating committee for judges that was being held in the District Court Building. And Charlie reminisced, as was his want, he talked about what we were doing. He was very clear about the process. And what I enjoyed the most was that despite all of us who were on that committee pestering applicants for the position with 1,000 questions, it was Charlie who kind of waited till the end and generally asked the critical question. It was based on his knowledge of that judge, it was based on the needs of the court, it was based on good law. One might have thought he was quizzing a student in a classroom, as some of them were and had been. I have enormous respect for him and, in my own way, believe that he would be far more comfortable wrestling with a problem in a courtroom than trying to figure out what a whole building is about. So, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, I support this resolution in naming the courtroom for Justice Daniels.
Second.
Excellent. Other comments? Questions?
Yes.
Sure. Vice Chair Pescotti?
I do so appreciate everybody showing up today and telling me about Charlie Daniels. I enjoyed your letters. They were long, and they were interesting, and they really gave me a sense of who he was. I was not lucky enough to know him in person, but your letters and your words really touched my heart. And so I fully support the naming of a courtroom after Justice Charlie Daniels.
Thank you. Commissioner Casado?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I, too, not only the emails that you got, but many friends of mine who are lawyers, all different nationalities, just so you know, went out of their way to call me or to meet with me. I didn't even know what they wanted to meet with me for. And, you know, you get a little nervous when your lawyer calls you and wants to meet with you, I think especially if you're a county commissioner. And that's what he wanted to meet about. And he had high praise, and he, you know, they said, "We don't want to tell you how to support, but we're just saying that we think it's a great idea and that people from this community and from this profession all feel the same way about, you know, Charlie Daniels." And so it's my privilege to support this.
So it's unanimous. The newest courtroom at the Second Judicial, Burnaleo County District Courtroom, 400 Lomis Boulevard, will take a vote. I'm just going for it. I'm just saying it's done. It's easy, it's unanimous, it's good, it's 5-0. So we'll be named for Chief Justice Charlie "Charles" Daniels. So there's a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? 100%. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner O'Malley and everyone. Thank you, everyone. Next is Economic Development, Winrock Town Center with Marcos Gonzalez. Marcos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Marcos Gonzalez, Assistant Director for Burnaleo County Economic Development. The Economic Development staff recommends the approval of the resolution to ratify and approve the issuance and sale by Winrock Town Center Tax Increment Development District 1 Series 2020A and the Winrock Town Center Tax Increment Development District 1 Subordinate Lean Grocery Tax Increment Bond Series 2020B, which the bonds will be secured by tax increment revenue in an aggregate maximum principal interest. Quick overview, the Winrock TID was formed in 2008 to facilitate development of public infrastructure at the town center in Uptown. The first bond issuance was in 2015 to finance a parking garage, roadway, and sewer infrastructure. The resolution before you will be for up to $45 million to refund senior debt and up to $60 million with subordinate for new money for new infrastructure, which includes another parking garage, park, and the ring road. The grocery seed tax dedicated by the state, city, and county at the time the districts were formed will provide the source of repayment for the series bonds. However, the state, city, and county are not obligated for the bonds, but the district is. The Legislative Finance Committee, the New Mexico Finance Authority, the City Debt Committee, City Finance Committee, Government Operations Committee, and the City Council have all approved the issuance of the bonds. The preliminary limited offering memorandum will be used to market the bonds, is expected to be circulated next week, and the bonds sold shortly after that and will close in March. To give a quick presentation, Darren Sand from Winrock Partners is here to go over the retail, medical services, and the housing components. I'd like to also note that Nick Dodd of Piper Jaffrey, the financial advisor, and Jill Sweeney with Sherman &amp; Howard, and Counselor Gibson, who serves as the Chair for the TID Board, are also here to answer any additional questions.
Okay. Mr. Sand? Do you want to ask him?
I think he's going to do a presentation first, and then after that, I will ask my questions.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chair Commissioners. My name is Darren Sand. I am the Vice President of Development at Goodman Realty Group. And it's a privilege to be here and share a little bit with you about the Winrock Tax Increment Development District. I'm going to briefly share where we have been, where we are today, and where we are going. In 2007, our company, Goodman Realty Group, purchased Winrock Mall. It's an 84-acre site in Uptown Albuquerque. At that time, we basically acquired a vacant mall. And in the first slide on the presentation, you'll see a photo of Winrock when we purchased it. We had seven tenants on the periphery, and the mall itself was closed. We then formulated plans to create a town center to address the current market trends and specifically attract the younger generation while also appealing to all generations. To assist in accomplishing the vision, we looked to the public-private partnership structure of Tax Increment Development Districts, also known as TIDS. As Marcos said, Winrock became a TID district in 2008. We were set to implement the Town Center Plan, but in 2008, the economic recession hit and the project stalled. It wasn't until 2012 that we began to add a few tenants, and in 2014, we gained momentum when we signed a number of leases with national tenants. In order to capitalize on this momentum, we asked the TID district to issue bonds. In 2015, we issued bonds in the amount of $43.3 million, and they were used for a public underground parking garage, public roads, and infrastructure. In the Slide 2, we have a photo of 2016 when the parking garage was complete and those national tenants were in. The parking garage is actually under the building on the right side of that photo. You can see on the foreground in the middle of the photo is the ramp into the parking structure. From the inception of the TID to this point in 2016, the project generated approximately 1,500 construction jobs and 300 permanent jobs. Then in 2017, we completed another phase of the project called the Corner at Winrock. And in the next slide, we see a photo of that in the foreground. It's across the street from Trader Joe's, and this development included restaurants and other retail. And then last year, in April of 2019, we signed a lease with New Mexico Orthopedics. And from that time till today, the momentum has greatly increased at Winrock. New Mexico Orthopedics actually opened about three weeks ago on January 20th. They brought 250 jobs and thousands of patients to the site. To capitalize on this momentum and bring completion to our original vision, re-requested of the TID district a second bond issuance. This issuance will refinance the existing bonds, add additional funds to include a subordinate bond issuance. The new funds will be a total of approximately $46 million. And the new funds will allow the project to construct a second parking garage, a community park, a main entrance, and complete additional public roads and infrastructure. In the next slide is a rendering of the completed project, basically the core of the site. This is facing west, as if you were over Regal Theater, towards the West Mesa. You see the central road, which is under construction currently. Also, there's a hotel that is visioned in this, multifamily units, medical, retail, and offices, well. The next slide is a close-up of the public community park. This is in the center or the core of the property. You'll see a large water feature which will be sourced with reclaimed water. There are bridges, walking paths, a gazebo, an outdoor performance space. And again, this is a public park for Albuquerqueans and guests. Next slide is our site plan. This is what we envision for the future. Legend on the side shows what tenants are in, what's available, and what's proposed. The next two slides, this one first, shows the TID infrastructure, which was constructed as a result of the 2015 bond issuance, which is a parking structure and some roads. And the final slide is what we propose to build with this bond issuance, of which we're here before you, which is another parking structure, the park that you see in the middle, a main entrance, and additional roads. We undertook this project with the intent to build a unique regional amenity for Albuquerque and Burnaleo County. It's an amenity that we hope to give an edge to our city, to attract young people and others alike. Many of our comparative cities have amenities such as this. We'd like to see Winrock... We'd like to see Winrock Town Center help Albuquerque rival these cities and provide an economic driver that benefits all parties involved. Thank you, and I'm happy to address any questions.
Okay. Start with Commissioner Casada, then Commissioner Colley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So look, I'm in favor of TIDs. I'm in favor of them, definitely, where we're really struggling for, you know, proper development. You know, when I supported TIDs and PIDs on my side of town, I had a lot of resistance, saying that they're not needed and why would you use them? And, you know, why are you doing this? And, and for my, in my opinion, these were created to develop places where you're taking a risk, where it's, where it has historically not been developed, where we historically don't have jobs, and we don't have any of those sorts of things, which you know I'm talking about is the west side of Albuquerque, especially west central and moving up Nine Mile Hill. And so, I do support them for that type of coming in and for development. I typically would not be for this, but after looking at your plans and now you're putting in mixed use, also, there could be a good argument that retail is really on the decline because of the internet. And so, you know, with those and with your future plans with housing and the mixed use and that type of model, I agree with you because I'm in a different city every other weekend and I'm looking at what's successful and what they're doing. And so, because of that, I think you have a strong argument here for me, for a TID. So, that being said, the roads that you, that, and the infrastructure that you're going to use that for, once those are constructed, do those become the property of the city or the county and they have to maintain them after that? Or does the developer itself, because it just, just looks like it's in Winrock and that they're the owners of all that land, is that something that you, that you would take, you would still take responsibility moving in, into the future, which makes it even a better thing for me? Not that I would totally be against it one way or the other, I just want to know the answer to that question.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Casada, that is correct. The city will own the public infrastructure and there is an operations and maintenance agreement in place which requires Winrock to operate and maintain all of it.
That's awesome, and, and thank you for that answer. So, you know, I can't wait till you get to the mixed use part of it. I think it's a great idea. I think that, you know, you're right, the city's a little behind the times and, you know, we're trying to really fight for those on the west side, that type of mixed use development. So I applaud you for that and, and, and being the first one to kind of prove that this is the future and that this is going to work. And so, other than that, those are only the real hard questions that I had. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Colley?
Thank you, sir. District 3 is, is excited to find this, not only breathing life back into an area that's been difficult for all of us, but imagining in new and exciting ways that I, I think are good models for other places in our community and in the state. So I, I'm grateful for that. I congratulate you on that. I, I certainly appreciate it. Let me ask a question, which is, it, it looks like a complete re-imaging, remodeling of that entire area and that some existing structures are going to disappear, roads are going to be where roads haven't been. Help, help me understand what we lose in this process.
Sure. Mr. Chair and Commissioner Colley, the, the buildings that remain are the Two Dillard's Buildings and the former Montgomery Rewards Building. Currently, the entire mall is no longer there.
Right.
And there is a, a main street being constructed right down the center of it. And if you recall, the glass pyramids at the west entrance of the mall, they remain as well, and they will be kind of an indoor/outdoor feature where cars will drive under those as they head towards the community park.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A huge change.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, when I was on the City Council, this is when this particular district came before us, and I want to disclose that I voted against it, and for the reasons being that I felt that this was one of the most valuable pieces of property in the city and that it did not meet the requirements for a tax increment district because, again, that's what they're for, was for redevelopment of properties, especially ones literally, a lot of times, that were used for downtowns because of all the cleanup that had to occur and the costs associated with environmental concerns, et cetera. And these were areas we wanted to revitalize. So that was, that was a large region. And so, the plan that was put forward at that time was even, was very ambitious, including, I believe, using geothermal power at one point. I don't know what happened to that. I haven't followed it since. But I know that, so essentially, everything right out of the private, right outside of the store is considered public infrastructure. So you walk out the door of Dillard's, that's the public infrastructure. That essentially is getting paid for. And I know that between 2008 and 2000, I think it was between, or maybe it was after 2012, that there was a change that resulted, it was a, I don't know, it was a resolution that went before the state legislature to actually change the base, to reduce the base that is, if you're familiar with this, you know, the, a TID is basically your, the increment above the real estate value and then the increased value, and then there's a portion of that that's dedicated to the tax increment district in taxes. So that base was reduced, which allowed for more tax, more of the tax increment to go to this project, which they were successful at doing, which I had some issues with as well. So this sort of leads us to this kind of like, it's already in place, the tax increment district's already in place. So now it's, all right, they're asking for the opportunity to refinance some debt, I think it's 40 million, and also for these public improvements. And it's my understanding that yes, there will be a maintenance agreement so that the government isn't responsible for the maintenance of these facilities, like this big pond and all those other facilities. So, I wanted to talk a little bit, it's my understanding that, okay, so one of the questions was about the capacity to repay this. And I imagine somebody did the numbers and evaluation of, of repaying this debt, even though we're not required to repay it, but there was some question about that, because I think the initial ask was much larger. So what is the response there from the, from our folks?
Commissioner O'Malley, members of the commission, Nick Dodd for the financial advisor will be able to speak to it.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Nick Dodd. I'm with Piper Sandler. We're the financial advisor to the TID Board. As part of the process in financing, there's been a very robust discussion. A number of parties have been engaged in, including two different independent consultants to forecast the revenues that will be generated within the district based on the development plan put forward that you've seen pictures of. And based on that development plan, the forecast does project the increment revenues that would be projected to be captured by the district, which would support the debt that is proposed to be issued. And, and that is a public report. The firm that put it out is EPS. It will be included in the offering memorandum, which is what the investors read to make a decision with regards to whether or not they'd like to buy the bonds. There's also a, a long-term financial forecast that shows the operations of the district based on the EPS forecast of revenues and the ability to repay the debt. So that is also, the forecast is also included in the limited offering memorandum, which the investors will read. Obviously, there's a number of assumptions that underpin those revenue forecasts and the financial models, and that's ultimately the risk that is inherent in these types of bonds. Similar process was taken, took place five years ago when the first bonds were sold and, and obviously, those bonds have, have been paid and can be refinanced today to save money. And so, we're following a similar process today.
Okay. So you feel comfortable with the, the financial projections and the, the analysis that, that actually you conducted?
We've, I feel comfortable that we're selling non-rated securities and that the lawyers are working through the proper procedures so that only sophisticated investors who understand the risk of buying these types of bonds, as they are non-rated, and they do carry risk because there's a number of projections associated with that. So with that caveat, I believe we've done an appropriate amount of due diligence to move this forward.
Fair enough. Thank you. And then just one final thing, Mr. Chair. There was this issue of affordable housing, I think that was brought up earlier, and I'm understanding this, there is some commitment. And Counselor Gibson, I didn't know if you wanted to speak to that, but there was, my understanding, a commitment towards providing support, I think, to the Housing Trust Fund or support for affordable housing in general, because there's the multifamily housing on this project.
Yes. Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Commissioner O'Malley. I'll just speak very briefly about this. There is, we do have an agreement, we have had an agreement since the, the beginning of this TID in '08, I believe it is, 2008, that, that the developer would contribute $5,000 per residential unit to the Workforce Housing Trust Fund. And so, however that, however they do that is still uncertain right now, but I think that, that the developer might be able to add to that.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner O'Malley, yes, in our agreement, we are required to contribute $5,000 per unit at the time of certificate of occupancy. We don't have any multifamily on-site yet. We are currently in design phase for the first multifamily, which is on the corner of Indian School in Pennsylvania for approximately 200 units.
And if you will mind, what, what do you anticipate for having a total number of units of, in this particular district?
About 500 of them.
Okay. Thank you very much for all my questions. Thank you.
Anyone else? I just had one real quick. Mr. Dodd, you mentioned, sorry, I couldn't get to you, I wanted Commissioner O'Malley to go. You mentioned non-rated and risk. Is this, are they in the same sort of situation as they were when they first went out for sale? So I mean, is this any different of a scenario this time than it was last time when these bonds went for sale?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, good question. So the district obviously has a lot of history now behind it, has had bonds outstanding for five years. Those bonds currently would self-support, so there's a track record here. You know, they're proposing to add a lot of additional debt, almost doubling it. And obviously, the growth in revenues that are needed, based on the forecast, should get there in the next three to five years, and the bonds are structured accordingly. So I think the investors will look at the track record and, and understand that this is a work in progress, but they've largely delivered on, with some changes frankly, to probably better the project. They've, they've made progress and are kind of where they're supposed to be.
Excellent. Great. Thank you.
Any other question?
Okay. Commissioner Colley, do you want to, oh, we need an AR number?
Yes.
Marcos?
Chair, yes, we will need a administrative resolution number.
Okay. Madam Clark?
AR 2020-22.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Commissioner Colley, do you want to move this forward?
Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm delighted to move approval of AR 2020-22.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second? Okay. Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Marcos. Thank you, Mr. Sand. Number 13, discussion. Says none, so I guess no one gets to discuss anything. All right, good. Number 14, announcement of the next commission meeting will be Tuesday, February 25th. Board of Finance at 4:00 and the administrative meeting at 5:00. If there's no other business, meeting is adjourned.